Welcome, everybody, to the April ninth meeting of the Wakefield Board of Zoning Appeals. I'll remind everyone that it's being recorded. I'm going to start with a roll call. Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Dave Hadfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Greg Demersion. I see him here, and Kirsten Brown.
Here.
Okay, with that, I will make a note that Mickey Feely is unable to join us this evening. At this point, I'm going to ask the clerk to read.
Legal notice.
Legal notice.
Short thing, Mr. Chair, consistent with the government's orders of Senate, certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one three oh one seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight two six eight eight nine four five seven eight seven passcode zero two six three three one. Please only use dial in our computer, not both, as all your feedback will disturb the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request if you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William and Town Engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight as far in advance as the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your requests. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One continued hearings. Two twenty five dash twenty eight, the Modern Group LLC application for a special permit and site plan approval under Article Four, Section one ninety dash twenty three of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a daycare center in an existing building with an indoor play area. The property is shown as mapped to a lot parcels PAM of the assesses map and is located at six oh seven North Ave Board of Appeals.
Make your job.
You're up.
As is a custom, we've got a couple of letters here to continue some hearings. In fact, all the continued hearings will be, in fact, continued. So first one up is case twenty five eleven thirty five Stark Ave, letter dated today from attorney Brian McGrail. Please continue this matter until May twenty eighth as they are finalizing work with the building inspector and expect it will allow the client, his client, to withdraw his appeal. The applicant has also agreed to extend the time to render decision to September fifteenth. So we want to continue to May twenty eighth and we applicant has agreed to extend time to render decision to September fifteenth.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at thirty five Stark Ave to our meeting on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five and accept the applicant's request to extend the time for the board to hold a public hearing and render a decision until April, I'm sorry, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Seconded.
All motions been made and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing seeing non regular voting members and Kasumi. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip? Chip, you muted?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Matters continue to May twenty eighth. Next up is cases twenty five twenty one, twenty five twenty two, one fifty four Salem Street and one fifty eight Salem Street. Attorney from a letter from attorney Brian McGrail dated today. Please continue this matter to April twenty third as they are working on their drainage report.
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue the matter at one fifty four and one fifty eight Salem Street to our April twenty third, twenty twenty five meeting.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing seeing none, same voting members. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That matters continue to April twenty third. Next up is case twenty five twenty six, four ten Main Street. Letter for attorney Brian McGrail dated today. Please continue this matter to four twenty three as work continues to compile information requested by the board at its last meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant, continue the matter at four ten Main Street to our April twenty third, twenty twenty five hearing.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing seeing none, regular same voting members. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi? And I vote yes as well. So if anyone's here for those matters, you've heard till when they'll be continued as we won't be discussing them tonight. Next up on the agenda, new hearings, case twenty five twenty eight located at six oh seven North Avenue. Mr. McGrail, believe it your case?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair. Thank you. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail, representing the Modern Group LLC. This is an application for a special permit and site plan approval under Article Four, Section one ninety twenty three of the bylaw to allow a daycare center in an existing building with an outdoor play area, which is really the component of the site plan approval. The property is situated at six oh seven North Avenue, which is a part of Lakeside Office Park, which I know is kind of confusing because Lakeside Office Park where I am located is is rather large. So I I'm going to have John Ogren address the site plan approval for the outdoor play area. But before I do that, I think I'd like to share my screen with Google, Google Earth to give the board a real good idea of where where the setup is going to be, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, please proceed.
Great.
Brian, while you're doing that, is this replacing the existing daycare or in addition to?
A new daycare.
There's already one in that's.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. I just was curious. Okay, thank you.
Yep, the demand for daycare is high, Dave. So this is Lakeside Office Park, which you're familiar with. And this is Quanapaw Parkway, which you're also familiar with, I'm sure. And this is why this is the perfect setup for a daycare, it's on a great location. This building is six oh seven. This building here where Quanapaw Parkway is and where the mine group proposes to locate is right in this door on the first floor. So and as you'll see, when John Ogren shows a site plan, it's really going to be hard for you to relate where it is when he shows a site plan for the playground area. Playground area is going to be over over in this area behind these vans. And the playground area is really just a black chain link fenced with privacy slots just for, you know, some some not permanent equipment, just play equipment that the kids will have. And the reason this is the perfect location for a daycare is I know it's always a concern for the board on how pickup and drop off is going to work, and this is so conducive because this unit has its own private drive circular driveway. So when parents pull in, they can drop off at the door and just head out. It's also a wonderful location because of proximity to one twenty eight, people that are commuting. They can get on or off the highway depending on, you know, end of the day, beginning of the day to drop off their kids. It's also a great location because there's a private walkway right here, which my office is right next to the playground. So when the kids come out, they have a nice safe place to walk back to the play area. And they've got some, they've got a lot of open space and, you know, this will probably become a park someday pursuant to the self stewardess facility that's contemplated on this lot. So I just wanted to familiarize you with the location. And I do want to say Paul Martin is on. He's one of the principals. He is on here with the Zoom in the event there's any questions that the the board has. They're looking at a maximum number of kids of fifty, approximately fifty, so it will be good size, but it can certainly handle it. Their their drop off, the latest drop off is nine thirty. Most of them will be early than that, as you can imagine. And the latest pickup is five thirty in the morning. There's plenty of parking, more than enough parking. This this lot is oversized. I've never had problems with clients parking in this lot. And obviously, the kids don't drive, so whatever staff members they have, depending on how many kids are there, there'll certainly be plenty of parking opportunity for them. And I'd like to present some of the details as it pertains to the special permit request and why it's a special permit in site plan approval. But before I do that, if I can, just to kind of keep the flow of the presentation, Mr. Chair, if I could have Mr. Ogren bring up the site plan to show the location of the play area.
Yep, that's good.
John, are you here?
Yeah, I'm just hold on.
Thank you.
It wouldn't let me share for a second there.
Just identify yourself, John.
Yep. John Ogren, Hayes Engineering. So just as Brian said, this is a little different orientation. He headed this is Quanapaw Parkway. This is the area of the the drop off that he was indicating. There's some question about there is an existing playground area currently here. The proposed playground is essentially just next to that. You know, you have Lake Quanapaw here. This is the six oh three building.
Six oh seven.
Hotel is here, six oh seven. This is this is the hotel. And so this is just a kind of a blow up of that area. You can see the parking lot here. They Quanapaw it. This is kind of the the edge of the existing playground. And this area in red is what we're proposing for the fenced in area and the fenced in area is going to be twenty four by sixty four. It's going to be six foot high, black chain chain link fence with privacy slots. There's an existing tree that's going to remain, that's going to be contained within it. And essentially, they're laying down a fabric and then a a pine mulch over that for the the plate, you know, the surface for the the play area. They said there is the the lake over here. There is some wetlands, bordering vegetated wetlands that we delineated that borders along the lake here. We did go to the Conservation Commission. We did file a notice of intent with them. They had a meeting and they did issue a favorable order conditions for this work. So not anticipating any major ground disturbance or changes in topography or anything of that sort. It's essentially putting down the fabric and then laying down the mulch over that. Answer any questions you might have.
If I can just wrap up my presentation, then we're happy to take all questions if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to point out that notwithstanding the fact that Master of Law's Chapter forty eight, Section Three provides that no zoning on and to by lock and prohibit or require a special permit for or incidental to a childcare facility, which is the equivalent of a daycare. Unfortunately, our bylaw does have that requirement, creating somewhat of a conflict, and we've been through this before because our bylaw does require a special permit for said use. So notwithstanding the protection afforded to a daycare by Chapter forty eight, Section Three, because of this conflicting language of the bylaw, the applicant is a belt and suspenders is applying for the special permit. And in any event, we need site plan approval as it relates to to the play area. So we would be here anyways for that component. As far as the special permit findings go, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's required under the table of use. It is essential and desirable to public convenience and welfare because it provides a much needed service to families in town. It it's also, it will certainly not create undue traffic congestion or impair any pedestrian safety. It doesn't get in the way. It's got a great pickup and drop off areas, I said. It's not going to overload any municipal services such as water or sewer or drainage. No construction is involved except for the play area, which, as John mentioned, has already gone before the Conservation Commission and been approved. And we certainly don't think it will impair the integrity or character of district of of the district or the adjoining districts or be detrimental to public health or convenience or welfare. As I mentioned, it's right next to my office. It's always great to have kids around. So it, I think it's been, you can't have too much of of this use, so it certainly doesn't create too much of a use because it is a there's a dire need for it right now. So with that said, Mr. Chair, we're happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Yep. And boy, just before we get to board member comments and questions, we do have some correspondence from town departments. First one is from Elaine, in a memo from Elaine Verlin from the Conservation Department to the board dated March twenty first reads, I've reviewed the application submitted to the Board of Appeals for a special permit on behalf of the Conservation Commission. I have no comment regarding the interior use of an existing building, but will comment on the proposed play area within one hundred feet of Lake Quanapaw it as it lies within an area jurisdictional to the commission. It proposes a pine non-diet safety mulch underlaid by presumably porous geofabric, which is in an environmentally good design. The play area is within twenty five feet of bordered vegetated wetland and will be installed within the current lawn, so it will not impact the vegetation. The commission recommends, as always, that the applicant hear the good housekeeping practices during the execution of the project, including but not limited to sedimentation control along the down gradient side of the site, dust control, pavement sweeping to minimize tracking, the protection of drainage inlet structures if there are any nearby. The applicant has filed with the commission, which will be reviewing it for other environmental impacts. That's that one. Next up is from the Fire Department from Chief Sullivan in a letter to the board dated April second. The Wakefield Fire Department has been asked to review an application for a special permanent site plan approval to allow a daycare center in the above referenced existing building with an outdoor play area. After reviewing the application, the department has the following comments regarding this project. The proposed daycare will be equipped with fire detection and, if required, fire suppression equipment required by the Massachusetts Building Code. All fire protection devices will be connected to and monitored by the existing fire alarm control panel in the building. The existing fire alarm system for this building is connected directly to the Wakefield Fire Department via municipal fire alarm master box. The center must also be equipped with an approved carbon monoxide detection system. The department has no issue with the layout and location of the playground area shown for the daycare. Thank you, Chief Sullivan. So that's the entirety of correspondence from town departments. Now we can open up the board for comments and questions. First hand up I see is Kasumi. Go ahead, Kasumi.
I'm just curious what's happening to the existing playground. Are you keeping those and adding a new playground, like separate?
Yes, because that's that's utilized by the other daycare center that's there. That's their, that's their property.
Okay, they don't want to combine to like one big playground?
No, can't do it for liability reasons and in 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 nice weather, as it should be, the kids are out there a lot.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I had the same question, so already answered. But just one other question, perhaps a condition. I was trying to remember other daycare permits we've approved, and I think I'm not aware, Mr. Chair, if there's any conditions coming from these CONCOM or other boards that have weighed in, but I assume we potentially conditioned signage on this, Brian, unless they, you know, presenting a sign. I think we retain jurisdiction, so you come back with something that or something would have changed on the road. Another tenant wants to put something in, you know, they we retain jurisdiction on signage.
Yeah, our our position on signage is right now, we're going to comply with the signed by law. Whatever we do. So if if we don't, we would come back for a variance. Otherwise, we're going to comply with the with the current sign by law, which is not the overlay district. They're going to do something small just to identify where they are. So probably there's something on the awning. They'll probably just do something on the awning.
Okay. I don't know. Help me out, board members. Would would we still not want to see it? Even if it needs the by law, I'm just.
They comply. I mean, I'm fine if they comply.
Yeah, I'm the same. If if it's going to be in compliance, I don't see a reason for us to review it.
Okay. I'm just pointing out there, I just trying to remember other.
Yeah, most of them.
The last one we did on Main Street was in the signed by law district, right? So that was maybe a little different. The one in Greenwood. We did look at signage, right? So we've done a couple of these, but we did look at it.
Well, because the Greenwood Plaza, we, you know, we're always looking at the new signs that goes in there. And most of our conditions on these are relate to the pickup and drop off. And to the point that was made during the presentation, this is, this is well set up for that with that private circular driveway. That should.
Brian, where does the other daycare enter and exit the building from?
Yeah, like, I'll show you Chip saying they have, they have their own circular driveway too, Chip, different ones.
Is it the one more in the middle?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Let me just check up, hold on, Chip.
So there's no con, my point is there's no conflict with the two at the same time.
No, I'm going to show you. They have this one. They're one of these two. And we're here.
Okay, yeah. Oh, good. They'll be full. They'll be full the second they open.
Questions?
There's nothing.
All right. If there's no more from the board at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public. There's a member of the public that's here to speak to this application. Please use the raise hand function in Zoom. Going once. Going twice. Okay, closing the public, public comment is closed. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
Before I do, just through you, Tom, any conditions on this one? I'm just trying to understand if we're gonna the max, the number of children, the hours, like, no, you're not foreseeing any conditions, board members, before we proceed to make a motion?
I'm not, I, you know, hours are pretty basic and normal, I think, for childcare. I don't think they're going to be dropping off at midnight, you know?
Well, the presentation did say that I'll be picked up by five thirty AM.
Well, they say five thirty.
I think you might have, if you want to check the recording. I I've left my kids at daycare that long. I know that, but.
Should I throw a red, should I throw a red flag on that and replay it?
But but I think five thirty PM is probably fine.
And the max children is really by the space and the state, right?
That's really the whole thing is the state controls all of this, really.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're looking at it going and they can, in in the state won't do anything until they get the town approval.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so just getting my notes correct here, one second. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I will move that we grant the special permit and site plan approval under Article Four, Section one ninety twenty three of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a daycare center in an existing building with an outdoor play area at six oh seven North Ave as depicted on the site plan presented to us from Hayes Engineering dated March tenth, twenty twenty five. And we make that in accordance, that approval in accordance with our site plan approval findings. And they are as follows, that the requested use is listed in the table of use regulations as requiring a special permit in the district for which the application has been made. The requested use is essential indoor desirable to the public convenience or welfare. The requested use will not create or add undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overload any public water, drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety or the general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience or welfare. And the requested use will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. I think that's the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members and Kasumi. Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
And I vote yes. She unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Yep, good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Yep. All right, moving right on to other matters. Case twenty five dash nine one forty one Montrose Ave. Request for minor modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's mine also. So this is a finding that was approved by the board not too long ago at one forty one Montrose Ave. And we're requesting a minor modification. It's pretty straightforward. If I can share my screen, please.
Sure, please do.
Thank you. This was somewhat of a unique addition, so the board may may recall. Let me just try to blow this up a little bit. There we go. It's one forty one Montrose Ave, and this is the addition in the back of the house that had the courtyard. You can see, do you remember this vaguely? Goes back to the summer, I think it was back in July. And what they're looking to do is a modification to this. If I could just point to you that the only relief that was dealt with was eleven point seven setback here on the chart. It was originally eleven point nine and it went to eleven point seven, requiring the finding is they worked on the final construction architectural plans. They wanted to make the courtyard a little bit bigger. So you'll notice that that dimension coming back here is thirty four feet on this side. And it's eleven point seven. So now I'm going to show you the modification plan. And the only change that they did is they just bumped it back further to open this up, make the courtyard bigger. So they've added four feet onto it, but the the critical part is it it still remains at eleven point seven in the back. And going over the zoning table on the modification plan. It is everything, the the, nothing changes. The front is required is a hundred. Proposed. Lot width doesn't change. Minimum lot area, it meets lot area. Front yard, front yard setback, it's compliant, remains compliant. Right yard doesn't change, obviously. The the left side, which where the relief was, doesn't change from what was approved. Minimum rear yard gets a little bit worse, but it's well within compliance, ninety eight, where twenty five is required. And it's only one story. And height is obviously met, building coverage is met, open area and regularity doesn't change. I also have this plan, this site plan is revised date of eleven six oh four twenty four by Audi and Dwyer. And then we have the architectural plans have not changed. They've just been adjusted to compensate for this extra space. So I will show you those for the record. Design is exactly the same. The only thing that has changed is whoops. The addition's gone from thirty four to thirty eight in the back. But Ben wanted these updated for the record also. And his the elevations of the proposed. Just got a little bit longer. So I would respectfully, in this, these plans are by the same architect, O'Sullivan architect, and these are dated eleven seven twenty, eleven seven twenty four by O'Sullivan Architects. I would respectfully suggest to the board that this is a minor modification. There's no impact on setbacks and everything else remains compliant.
Okay, thank you, board members, questions, comments?
Brian, how did it get longer but still stay the same on the separate setback, if that? That's at an, if the plot's at an angle?
Let me see, Joe, hold on, let me bring it up, I'm not.
See, I'm fine with it, I would, I'd be surprised if it even came to us, I don't think anyone even picked it up, but. I mean, the, the addition got two feet bigger, but it didn't get closer to the property line, that just seems weird.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm not, I didn't put my stamp on it.
I know, just.
Well, it got closer in the back.
It didn't, yeah, but that ten point seven didn't change, right? And that's that side one. No, just. Seems.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, I'm not the geometry expert, but. Seventy, so you got.
Well, if the addition was running parallel to the lot line, then just going back four feet wouldn't.
Isn't that side line go at an angle? I don't, I, I don't know, I guess.
Alright, let's just quickly look at it.
I think because there's another red line in there, it skews the view, but.
Maybe, yeah, maybe I'm seeing the wrong something.
The black line relative to the dash foundation line looks pretty parallel, so. I just, I had the initial thought when you brought that up, or when he showed it, but.
Yeah, let me go back, let me just, just to double check, let me go back to the. To the, to the original, um, I'm not sharing anything right now.
You're not.
I was, sorry about that. So this is the modification plan, let me shrink it down a little bit.
Oh, I, I, I get what you're saying. That, that plot, that lot line.
I don't know.
I was looking at that, yeah, I was. I was looking at that red line at the angle, so you're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just go back to the, real quick, you, you guys are the experts more, more than me, to show you the current approved plan. Yeah.
Yeah, it stays parallel.
Eleven point seven.
Yep. No, that's that red line that threw me off.
Yeah.
I get you.
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Greg?
Hey, Brian, if I recall on this project, I believe there was a bit of a concern from the direct to butter. Do you know if that was discussed or reviewed?
Well, his, I think his main issue was drainage, Greg, which this isn't going to impact, and the town engineer is going to review that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. It's another matter, it's a minor mind, so there's no, we're not going to open it up to the public. It's really now up to the board.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we find that the proposed modifications to the. Alterations being made at one forty-one Montrose Ave. As presented on the updated site plan from Audi and Dwyer dated November sixth, twenty twenty-four. And the architectural plans from O'Sullivan Architects dated November seventh, twenty twenty-four. Are deemed minor modifications to the existing special permit and other relief granted by this board.
Seconded.
Okay, motion been made, seconded, any further discussion? Making sign on regular voting members and Greg, Dave?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes, that is unanimous. All right, next matter, cases twenty-two sixty-seven, twenty-two sixty-eight, one Hickory Hill Road. Request for a minor modification. I believe, uh, board member Chip Tarbell was involved in this too. So, Brian, why don't you give the background and Chip, you can win.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, as, as you mentioned, this is one Hickory Hill Lane, one Hickory Hill Road, I'm sorry. And what had happened was, if I could share my screen, I'll refresh your memory. This is a three family dwelling that was permitted by the board a while ago. I come, if you're coming down Greenwood Street, you head up Hickory Hill. And we had a landscape plan on this project that was done by Jim Emanuel. Which I'm showing on the screen, and what happened was. The board had conditioned that two trees remain, this thirty foot maple. In the twenty-four, twenty-four inch, I should say, Chip, is that twenty-four inches, at the diameter or the height? I don't know, well, anyways, it was a maple tree that was going to remain, and a pine tree that was going to remain on, is shown on the plan. And we came back, so we came back to the board because during construction, it was determined that they were not going to be able to be saved. The board approved that those trees could come down, there was a written decision on that, that's in your file. And recorded at the town clerk, allowing those trees to be removed. That was conditioned upon board member Tarbell being appointed to come up with something that would fill that area. And so we met with Chip on site. And keep your focus on this area where these trees were. Up front, this is the front of the building, looking out towards the intersection of Greenwood and Hickory Hill. So it created a gap in this area. And what we proposed, or what Chip required, required us to do was to put three ten foot pine trees in that area. And that has been done, and I've got a photograph. Showing that. So these are the good sized pine trees, they're ten footers that were planted actually today. In that area, and I think this really does a nice job of filling the gap, I think that, well, Chip can speak to it. But I think that that was the goal, I guess I'll handle it with Chip.
Yeah, Hickory Hill is, is, is just what it's called, it goes straight up. And this, the vacant trees created a knoll kind of jumping out. From the semi circle, jumping out from the driveway, so. These three pines in the crest, if right on the other side of that is about a ten foot drop off to the next lot. So this helps visually kind of soften as you're driving up when you're looking at the three family to the right. You may remember this is the, the. Proposal that we changed the direction of the first one to look out onto Hickory Hill. And the other one to look, the other two to look down the hill. So it came out well, I mean, the, the project came out well, they remember that. That first driveway and then the other two. And then we've adjusted the irrigation on the site to be appropriate for the site and for the plantings.
Yeah, those trees will be irrigated, yeah.
Yeah.
Chip, how, how big will they get? I mean, because, I mean, the, the trees that were there were substantial, I do remember the previous discussion, but. Are those ten footers going to get somewhere, anywhere near what these, like the?
Yeah, they're white pines, you and I won't see them get huge. They're also, you know, the white pines grow fast. However, they're birch tree grown, so they don't get spindly, they stay kind of strong, so. I mean, they'll get twenty-five, thirty feet eventually, but it'll be years.
Yeah. Okay.
So what we're looking for is. You, you know, you really designated Chip, so I don't know if you really need, even need a vote to approve that, because he was. He was designated, let me share the letter, if I can. So you, your board can determine how you want to handle it.
Right, because it sounds like you're just, you've now fulfilled what?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm verifying that they fulfilled what was requested by us originally.
So I'll, I'll let you read this instead of me, can you, is that big enough for you to read?
Talking to me?
Everybody.
Is there something on the screen?
Oh, no.
I see, it's our letter.
A little small for me.
There you go.
Yeah. Unless we're going to modify what was already in that letter, because we were going to do something different. I'm not sure we need to vote on anything else, we're just fulfilling that and it's on the record, we got it.
Yeah, Chip approved it, the only thing we need is, we need authorization, Chip inspected the site, they're looking to get CO. And Ben would like a letter from Tom saying that, you know, especially with this change that occurred, that the board is, the board is good. That conditions have been met.
Is there something in writing or a picture or both that can say this, here's evidence that that has been fulfilled, maybe just as?
Well, I think, I think I can go on record that's saying it's been fulfilled, and Tom can. Send a little note that the board's requirements have been fulfilled.
I can attach a picture of the trees, Dave, to the letter.
That's all I'm thinking, just something, so it's in the file that that's what, in case, you know. Five years down the road, we're not on the board and the things died and somebody's trying to remember what it was. So, we, we, we had a record of what, what actually got done to fulfill this, and then.
That makes sense, we'll, I'll attach a copy to the letter.
Mr. Chair, I think that's sufficient in my mind, if you're in agreement with that.
Oh, yeah, I do, because I think that other letter is pretty clear.
Yeah.
All right, everybody go with that?
Yep.
Good.
We'll get the picture, we'll attach it to the letter I send to Ben, okay? So takes care of that.
Yep.
Next up. Board discussion to review sign law, sign by law recodification. Which.
I'd like to push this off till our next meeting, if we could. I've started to go through it, but I'd like to go through it better.
Okay.
Not quite.
I'm fine kicking the can, yeah, I'm fine kicking the can down the road along this one, we got time on this.
I don't want to kick it way down, but, because I'd like to get it to the planning board, but I'm not quite ready for that quite yet. If that's okay?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, other board members?
I'm okay.
Chip, I had some comments on it, am I able to share my comments with you for your review? And then you can kind of compile them together, or do you want me to just report them separately in our next meeting?
I think we need to report them separately in the open meeting.
Okay. Got it.
But thanks for doing that, Greg.
Yeah, I noticed a couple of mine things, but I was going to bring them up in the meeting, so. Hold on to.
Let me ask you, bring up a point, should we invite Jim to the meeting, or is that out of? You know, is that something that shouldn't be done because he's not with the town anymore, but he wrote it, so is it something that we should ask him to do?
Well, we know, I, I can tell you that. He's comfortable in the state that it's in, because he presented it to Steve Mayo and to everybody on that board, so it, it was a finished product when he left.
Oh, yeah, I get it.
I'm not sure we can bring him as, as a consultant. As an off meeting, I mean, I guess we could, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
Not as a consultant, but we take testimony from people that don't live in Wakefield, I don't know if it matters, so if he wanted to attend the meeting and. Provide public testimony, he's well within his rights to do that.
Agreed, in that, in that capacity, yes.
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll reach out to him, see if he has any thoughts.
Yeah, see if he wants to come, Joe, next meeting. He's got nothing.
Flag him, I'll, I'll, I'll flag him down when he's walking the leg.
Is he still walking every day?
Yeah. Pretty much.
You might want to ask his wife first, who might send him to the meeting.
That's true.
All right, well, 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 Amy, if you can just make a note to put that on the next agenda for us, that would be great. Thank you. All right, clerk board comments, anybody?
Just one item, just as a follow up to last night, so I attended the planning board meeting where they. I think first discussed the ADU by law change, I know there were other forums. Held, but this was now the first time, I think it was in front of the planning board for a public hearing. And wasn't a lot of people in attendance, Brian, myself, and maybe a few others, but. You know, offered a couple of comments, Brian did as well, he can speak for himself, but just, they continued it till the next week, so. There was a question about, did, could they actually change any of the language in there before it actually? Went to print and got on the warrant. So I think they continued it a week just to confirm with Attorney Mullin. Just, just to see if anything could change, either as part of the public hearing process. Because I think the, the deadline for actually getting articles on the warrant has already passed, so this is a bit of a gray area, because we're beyond that. But we'll see what happens on the fifteenth. You know, I, I certainly would hope and expect them to recommend favorable action, but. Whether it comes with some changes that happen that night, or as part of what gets published and printed and. That, you know, presented at the town meeting, we'll see. But I, I'll probably attend again next week if anyone else is available, feel free.
Yep. Appreciate that, Dave.
But I, I will say, I should have added, sorry, that some of the comments that we raised at our last meeting, although we did not see an updated copy, I thought we were going to get one, we didn't. Specifically like the, the concerns about the dimensional regulations. That language did get changed, and it looks like, you know, so they would. They would still have to honor sort of existing underlying dimensional stuff in the zones that they're going for, so. I think that was one of the. More significant concerns, I think, that came out of our hearing in February, that language did get changed, so I was comfortable with that. But there's a couple of other things in there that maybe could use a little tightening up. But I know that was a big one, and I'm going to go through my notes again before next meeting. But that was certainly the big one that caught my eye. Sorry, Tom, back to you.
No, I looked at it too, we saw the, the dimensional stuff, and it, it's just too bad, to your point, that we didn't get the copy before it went to the planning board. But if that can, if our concerns are being addressed, I guess at the end of the day, we'll be all right. All right, anybody else with anything? Okay. We've got minutes for March twenty-sixth.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes, the meeting minutes from our March twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Meeting. Expertly prepared by Amy Purcell, our, our new board admin, thank you, Amy.
I get a second one, yep, okay, this can be voice vote on this thing, all those in favor? Okay, that is unanimous, Amy. Yeah, I'm going to have to call Gail and say, Amy, get this out of here in an hour, you know?
Forty-seven, I'm, I'm going forty-eight minutes, actually, so.
Enjoy it, Amy, there'll be a midnight in here.
Oh, I know, trust me, I've been warned.
All right, we're all set, guys, thank you.